Did you pick up the sign in list?
Okay, we all set? Mary?
Yes.
Okay, Vicki? Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for a salute to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Terry, notice of publication?
Mayor take notice that this special meeting has been advertised and posted in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Pool, 1975.
Roll call?
Councilperson Buchanan?
Here.
Willow?
Here.
Kilpatrick?
Here.
Lembo?
Here.
Melendez? Novak?
Here.
Okay, tonight is a special meeting and the subject is the sale of recreational marijuana in the borough of Saraville. It is not about medic- or medical marijuana. We felt it was important on the sale of recreational marijuana that we wanted to get input from our residents. Does anybody wanna make a statement before I begin?
I do, Mayor.
Go ahead.
First, I wanna thank the residents for coming out. I wish more people would come out for these events. At last night's meeting, the council voted on a resolution opposing medical marijuana, which I thought was a jump-
Recreational marijuana?
I'm sorry, recreational marijuana. I thought that was jumping the gun since we're having a hearing tonight. And what's the point of the residents coming out and discussing recreational marijuana if the council made a decision on it already? I apologize for whoever did come out because, again, the resolution was passed by three of the five members that were up here. I'm not sure if it was signed yet by anyone. But it was very disappointing that we couldn't push it off one night to hear what the public had to say. And I made the point where if it was voted in favor, those who are in favor of, I'm sorry, when I say in favor and objectionable to it, I don't wanna confuse them. Those who voted for the resolution said that they're opposing recreational marijuana, that those who oppose recreational marijuana wouldn't have come out tonight were the adverse. If somebody, if we voted that down, that the people in favor of recreational marijuana wouldn't have come out. We wanted as many people as possible. I'm very disappointed that the council voted on it last night. I wish we would've done it tonight. I don't know if it affected the turnout, even though we had more of a turnout today than we did the last meeting. But at the same time, we're supposed to listen to the residents then vote. Here we're doing it back, here they did it backwards. I did abstain and Councilman Melendez abstained at last night's meeting because we wanted to hear the public. We wanted their input. That's all I have to say.
Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to just make a point. Thank you, Councilwoman Buchanan. I think it is important that we explain the process that we are undertaking here. The resolution last night, and I was not at last night's meeting unfortunately, but I'm aware of the decision and I have the resolution in front of me. But just to clarify for the crowd, and I'll ask the attorney, Mr. Dupont, it is non-binding. We still have to make a significant number of decisions in terms of how we want to approach medicinal, adult use, as well as the potential grow of marijuana. So your comments are certainly valuable tonight because the resolution is simply a statement. It is not any policy agreement that we're gonna make from zoning code perspective or anything like that. The council still has to deal with that issue and make decisions down the line. So I wanted just to be clear that this is not a sealed deal. Thank you.
What, the resolution, excuse me, Mayor, may I? The resolution was primarily to, we wanted it sent to our legislatures in Trenton to let them know that we weren't in favor of this. As we all know, Trenton is gonna do what Trenton is gonna do. And then, you know, then we will have ordinances to worry about.
There are, where'd you put them, Terry? In the back or the front? There are copies of the resolution in the back. So anyone that wants to get a copy and read it, please go ahead. Okay.
Mayor, if I-
Go right ahead.
-start, I'll put on the record. First, I wanna thank Councilman Gorillo for stating the fact that this was a resolution that was voted on that does not in any way, shape, or form stop what we might decide moving forward once we have, you know, whatever Trenton decides to do. We have a lot of decisions moving forward, once that decision comes down and we're faced with it as a municipality. I have put on the record, I think for the first time, that we actually had discussions about recreational marijuana. It was actually based on something that was in our council packets and Olbridge had put their ordinances forward to us, letting us know what they were doing. I had made mention of bringing that here to the council so we could have a discussion. We've done a lot of very good things. We have a committee now that's been formed and I believe that it's Councilman Lembo, along with Councilman Gorillo and Councilwoman Buchanan, that serve on that. Last night, when the resolution came before us to vote on, I did not feel the need to abstain personally because I have made my comments pretty clear as an educator, as a parent, where I stood in reference to recreational marijuana, however. And at a certain point, I must say, I was, from a medical marijuana perspective, I listened to a lot of people, not just here in the council room, because it is disappointing when we don't have a very large turnout on this issue. I've been an educator for eighteen years. I have spoken to my student's assistant counselor. I've spoken to my students. I have gone to many funerals and I've gone to many interventions. I have spoken to a lot of residents. My decision for voting in favor of the resolution to ban is based on all of that information and all of those opinions. That, however, does not mean that the people that are coming up here tonight, that your opinions don't matter. I made a decision. It is something that I'm asked to do as a councilperson. I did not want to abstain. I wanted to hold true to what I feel at this point. So I please, I hope that those people that are here don't think that I'm turning my ear to you and not hearing you. That was how I felt though at that moment. I thought it was important to put on the record, having heard what Mr. Gorillo, Mr. Buchanan, and what Councilwoman Mary, Councilwoman Novak had said too.
Okay, anyone else?
Mayor, yeah, I'd also just like to say, as Councilman Gorillo said, the resolution is non-binding. Had this been an ordinance we were voting on, I would've then agreed with Councilman Buchanan to wait to get all the public input in. But being, like I said, the resolution is non-binding, I see no harm in getting our opinion out there.
Okay. What we'd like to do is, I'll call up everyone that has signed in. I'll ask, again, we're not, we're here to really listen to your opinion, so it's more of your personal statements that we'd like to hear. It's not really set up to engage in a, we will engage in a dialogue, but it's really what you're saying is what we set these meetings up about. So if you can bring your comments to about a five-minute package, it would be appreciated. The first person on the list is Kevin Heaney from Ash Terrace.
Hello? Good evening.
Kevin, could you spell your last name, please?
Heaney, H-E-A-N-E-Y.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, members of the council. Just as a brief deviation from what I prepared to say, I would agree with those who expressed disappointment at having a vote before this forum was conducted. Just wanted to note that I agree with that. I just wanna say a couple of words about this issue. And I noticed that the, as advertised tonight, it seemed the issue was about the sale of marijuana within the town and so my comments were geared towards that. And I would just ask, as you think about the issue of the sale of marijuana in this town, I would implore you to remember that this is truly an issue of economics and not as an issue of safety or morality in that regard. With the election of Governor Murphy and our legislature as it stands, I think the people have made their voices clear on this issue and what they wanna see, to be, have marijuana be legalized statewide. And I would just like to draw comparisons to some other things that we currently do all over town, which is if I wanna go and buy a pack of cigarettes, or I wanna go a bottle of wine, or I wanna buy a lottery ticket, as I'm sure many people have the past couple of weeks, I might have to go to a specific store, I might have to show identification, I might have to follow the rules and regulations as they stand. But those are things that we already do throughout this town. And if I choose to partake in any of these activities, that's subject to a tax. And that tax from that purchase might be used for our schools, or for our parks, or our roads, or public safety programs for our first responders, or even towards programs to fight the opioid epidemic. And again, I just wanted to kinda bring it back to what I said at the beginning, you know, this isn't a moral issue for the town to decide. If a person doesn't wanna partake, they don't have to. It's not a logistical hurdle, as like I said, we already have regulations on tobacco, on alcohol, on other such products. Those arguments are from a previous time when we tried to enact a failed war on drugs, which has only, you know, sorry, which has done nothing to reduce the use of dangerous narcotics in our communities. I just wanted to kinda pose a question to the council, a bit rhetorical, to say, one rhetorical, then I do a practical question. Why would it be that Saraville would want to be willingly left out and left behind of this economic opportunity when we can expand our local economy, bring more businesses to town, and gain much-needed revenue which can help provide essential services to the people? I believe the question answers itself, but others may feel differently. And then, I know you said it is a non-binding resolution and so I guess part of the question that I would like to seek more clarification on is if the state legalizes the use, the recreational use and the sale of marijuana, would the resolution as pending, I guess, you know, you said it's non-binding, but would there be any sort of obstruction or different sort of policy set from the town which might try to interfere with that practice?
Michael?
If I may, the resolution would be overridden of the state law, so that would not, the resolution had no effect on that state law.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kyle, I can't pronounce your last name, Kyle.
Osmolski, O-S-M-U-L-S-K-I.
There you go.
How do you do, gentlemen?
Kyle, if you could give us your street?
Eighty-three Haven Terrace.
Okay.
Good evening. This is my first time speaking here. I'm a New Jersey resident. My entire life I was born in Forts, two, three years there, came here when I was a child. And attended all of my education here until I left for Marine Corps boot camp in 2004, where I served honorably for five years as a signals intelligence communications specialist.
First and foremost, thank you for your service.
Thanks. I did it for you.
I appreciate it.
No, I did it for perspective. And what I feel like I needed to do was come here and offer that perspective. Certainly, I've witnessed things that are unique to folks who've traveled in the same footsteps and stepped out of this continental United States and maybe into a war zone. And the hiccups that we face in returning home are exasperated by an antiquated view on life. Up until very recently, even through the VA, there was no medical marijuana offered as a solution. What was offered to me from my post-traumatic stress, from anxiety disorder, depression, et cetera, were host cocktail of drugs, which they had no problem prescribing to me en masse for ten-month supply for nine-month deployment to Iraq or Afghanistan. Coming home, I decided to separate from the military. I no longer believed in the actual job that I was doing personally. And that was a personal choice that I made. But more importantly, it was how much I would have to be medicated to continue functioning in that environment at that level. I was plagued by nightmares and, you know, the inability to sleep. I chose not to, which resulted in other health defects. I have a pre-existing thyroid condition, which is also exasperated by the anxiety, or exasperates rather, the anxiety that I feel as a result of a disparity between what I feel is a moral right or certainty that if something offers ameliorative qualities to your life and affects no one negatively, I can't justify the opposition to those things, even if they go against what I personally would believe. And it's in that vein that I spoke out when medical marijuana was coming to New Jersey and when the issue of would we or would we not accept a governor who intended on justifying a new budget by imposing a tax on a new industry. What I would caution everyone here is to, acknowledging the non-binding nature of this resolution is great, but without a plan to quickly and appropriately address the social and, I'm sorry, the societal and safety issues that would come from this. As you mentioned, as an educator, you know you're well-educated, I imagine, on the impact it would have on a developing brain. This is of utmost concern to me, who would be a private citizen, who would engage in activity once sanctioned by my state, that I would also not want to see the negative effects of this legislation impact the next generation to come. And it's, I appreciate and applaud your caution here. I would, however, further caution you to not stick to your guns and stick to your laurels and fall behind on the progressive edge of where this industry will take this state. And if you don't want this municipality to fall behind the neighboring municipalities, you have to acknowledge the sentiment of about seventy percent of the national population throughout each demographic that has or will engage in recreational use. And that hasn't changed since the beginning of the war on drugs. That number won't go away, but what will go up if we don't, if we don't take action timely enough, is the cost of falling behind. The lack of funding for programs that we will increasingly need. The overpopulation of the schools, it gets worse every year. The lack of money to build new additions that may, that, you know, enact crazy programs like the pilot program for that riverfront property and accept a lump sum payment, defer taxes, and then give no incentive for the industry to move in. We need to create a burgeoning industry around what will be a very large market in order to take advantage in a timely fashion of something that is inevitable. As a member of this generation, I'm thirty-three years old. I do see it in my lifetime as being nationally decriminalized, rescheduled as a class-two or three narcotic. And with that, I do hope that opinions change and biases fade away. Because the stigma that I suffer, having to admit publicly the depression, the PTSD, and then also having to feel like a criminal for not wanting to take liver and kidney destroying medication to cope, to sleep, to not have nightmares, and instead to just be able to relax and feel that my state has my own safety and health in mind in everything that it's doing. That includes what my projection for the future would be. And with that, I also tie it back to the education. I want there to be ample money to keep kids on a path where they don't need to go fight a war to get college money, or they don't need to go into a combat zone to gain perspective, that there are programs that enrich their lives that can only come from new sources of revenue. That's the main thing that I think will be missed out on by the next generation, is the availability of the dynamic environment of education and where it's heading for the classroom that they're going to occupy, not the generation after them, like it was promised to us. That's it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you.
Anne? Anne, if you could pronounce and say your last name, please?
It's Murican, M-U-R-I-C-K-A-N.
Oh, and you're on Saraville Boulevard South?
Yeah, thirty-eight.
Thank you, Anne.
Good evening, council. So I'm a student at Saraville War Memorial High School. I'm in tenth grade and a resident of Saraville for twelve years. And I'm part of TIGS, which is called Teens in the Guardian State, which is a club in Saraville, which is all about telling kids that you don't need to have drugs or you don't need all of these pressures that people use in high school to cope, like Kyle said. And it's a club that shows that you can do all these good activities instead of doing drugs to help you fit like the pressures of high school. So that's all about trying not to use drugs. But if Saraville is promoting or allowing the recreational use of marijuana, that kind of goes against what TIGS is talking about. So I was gonna tell you about some of the statistics of marijuana itself. Marijuana has both short and long-term effects on the body. Within a few minutes of smoking marijuana, a person feels the effects of this as it rapidly passes from the lungs into the bloodstream, making its way into the brain and other organs. So what causes the high people, the high experience is the marijuana's effect on over-activating parts of the brain. And this, like, this affects the brain's receptors, the neurons, and it changes the way they, the senses, and it alters what you think what your mood is and your body movement. So it's altering all these things and it's affecting how you behave to other people. And researchers still don't know completely the whole effects of marijuana. So that's just going to show that people consuming marijuana, like, that's totally affecting them and they're not realizing how big of a deal this is. And just legalizing it, even in states where marijuana is illegal, people are still finding a way to bring it into the state or bringing it into the town. And it's still, like, they're gonna still bring it inside. So legalizing will increase the use and make more people believe that it's not that bad. I mean, if they're legalizing it, then it must be okay. So what I'm saying is that in TIGS, in our club, our idea is to encourage people to get naturally high by doing exercise, by eating like good foods, like, these are all ways where you can naturally release the endorphins. And instead of legalizing marijuana, like, we should be thinking about ways that naturally release it. Instead of legalizing something that's gonna, like, it's gonna harm the citizens. Why would we, why would we want to harm the people and affect their mental health? I mean, sure, there are financial standpoints that are gonna, like, they're gonna benefit our community. Maybe they're gonna cut illegal sales and they're gonna generate tax revenue and create jobs. But is that really worth the risk of affecting the health of our citizens? And not just, like, your generation, but the coming generation? I mean, kids in my school, they have like these drugs and other substances allowing marijuana to be like legalized. That's just gonna bring more people, more students into having this. So that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. That was the extent of the people that had signed up prior to the beginning of the meeting. Does anyone else wish to make a public comment? Eddie?
Ed Strick, lifelong resident of Saraville. Having grown up just about a block away from the town hall. And I can remember, and probably most of the council members don't remember, but Mary may remember, all the things we had in Saraville, on Main Street. You could walk out of your front door of your house. You would get, go to a shoemaker shop, you'd go to a luncheonette. You can go to a movie. You could go to a luncheonette, all without marijuana. You could go to a barber shop, you could go to a hairdresser, all within one block of my house. We didn't need marijuana. The gentleman said that the council is stopping businesses from moving into Saraville because they're not gonna allow marijuana to move in? So what? Get some good businesses in town. We don't need marijuana in Saraville. We don't need it. Saraville's a home of veterans. All those veterans on those monuments in front of the Borough Hall are turning over in their graves to see what your Saraville's trying to do. Legalize marijuana? We don't need it. We don't need it. Mrs. Kilpatrick mentioned when we scheduled our first meeting that she wanted it canceled because she felt that there was something going at the high school and that we wouldn't be able to generate enough of people. But apparently, judging from the people here today, Saraville residents are not too concerned about the sale of recreational marijuana. The military is. The military is concerned. You get court martialed if you're on active duty. But Saraville has changed. Saraville has changed. And I don't think approving marijuana in Saraville is gonna do the residents any good. It's gonna increase marijuana in the schools. Sixteen-year-olds, it was right in the newspaper, they're getting involved with marijuana at that age, sixteen years old. It's sad. It really is. And it's not gonna get any better if you start selling it in Saraville. Can you picture a store in the heart of Saraville, on Main Street, selling recreational marijuana? I just can't see it happening. I just can't see it happening. Being a lifelong resident, I grew up in the town. My parents all grew up here. And I just feel that the council should really give this serious thought. I don't know what the governor's gonna do, but if you read the newspaper, he seems to be leaning towards allowing it. I don't know what grounds the council have on acting on this, but as far as I'm concerned, my own personal opinion, if you're gonna attract businesses in town, attract nice businesses. Not looking at the financial part of it, but looking at what's good for Saraville. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Are there any other comments or questions on this issue? Yes.
My name is Tom Fritzzen. I live at 143 Main Street, so just a quick walk from here.
Tom, how do you spell your last name?
F-R-I-T-Z-E-N.
F-R-I?
T-Z-E-N.
Go ahead, Tom. Go ahead, Tom.
So I just, actually coming in late to the game, and I was just looking over this resolution. I had a couple of questions, and I don't know if anybody can answer them, but so this is just so that nobody can set up a shop here. If the state of New Jersey legalizes the sale of recreational marijuana, we're saying that nobody can set up a store in town.
Counselor?
Yes. What that resolution is saying, that we are opposing, or the mayor and council are opposing any retail sale here in the boroughs of Cervel.
Okay. I mean, listening to a couple of points, I came in a little late, but people do have some good points. I, I really, I really don't have any skin in the game. I can go either way. I don't use marijuana, never used it, but I do see some kind of possible for, some kind of financial gain for the town with like heavy restrictions on the store or whoever does open up this place, to make sure that they do it by the book, by the rule, and all that stuff, and I think it could be a financial win for the town. But again, like I said, I don't have any skin in the game. If it goes through, great. If it doesn't, it's really not gonna make me matter, but I don't think we should turn this away. Like the gentleman just said, he doesn't want to see it here sold in Cervel. Well, what makes Olbridge maybe gonna sell it, or Perth Amboy, or South Amboy? They might sell it. They're gonna make a lot of money. People are gonna go from here to South Amboy to buy it. So if they're going to buy it in other places, if it's legalized, wouldn't you think we might wanna get in on that kind of, you know, windfall as far as money is concerned? I also have a couple of questions, or maybe one question, about, it's one, two, three, like the fifth paragraph down, where it says it's declared itself a public policy, no, not, I'm sorry, the one above that. With a significant diliteration consequences of the quality of life as well as health, safety, welfare of borough residents, where are we getting that kind of information from? How do we know it's going to be a detriment to the health of the people here in the Cervel?
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, that's based on some information that's been circulated on some lobbying efforts as to anti-marijuana. There's been studies, there's been newspaper articles about the, the effects of marijuana on one's body and one's brain.
Yeah, I don't see much. I've seen a couple of those studies because I've actually been keeping an eye on the newspapers. I have seen, you know, Washington State, Colorado, I've seen all the different other counties, or I'm sorry, other states that have legalized marijuana. I've seen some of those studies, like I know Colorado, somebody said that lately, over the past five or six years, their car crashes have gone up as far as the statistic is concerned. Problem is, when they pulled out those statistics, nobody went and looked to see if any of those people who were car accidents were on marijuana. So really, the numbers, you can twist the numbers any way you want to make it look like it's a bad thing, but you really have to look at the deeper numbers to find out what's truly going on. That is my only opinion. Like I said, I really don't have skin in the game. It might be a windfall for the town, we might make a lot of money. I know Colorado is making money hand over fist, so is Washington State. Their profits have gone up, or their, you know, their tax rate has gone up, so it's, it's something that we might wanna consider, and also, why would it also be a resolution? And how come we wouldn't want the citizens of Cervel to vote on it themselves? Would it be maybe to put it on a ballot for like, for the township to vote on?
Well, first and foremost, I think this is just a, an announcement
Okay.
of the mayor and council's intentions with respect to recreational use. It's my understanding that the bill has been pushed back in terms of adoption or vote for denial in November. It's really just a proclamation by the mayor and council here of Cervel.
Okay. That's fine to me. I think that's really all I have to say.
Thank you, John. Are there any, anyone? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Drell Fung.
Could you say that again?
F-U-N-G.
And your first name?
Drell, Deason David, R-A-L-L-E.
And your, and your street?
Harding Avenue, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
I have heard both sides of the story. I have heard how some oppose because it might lead to a more destructive behavior, but we got plenty of Gogo bars, we got plenty of liquor stores in town, so are the Gogo bars promoting prostitution? Are the liquor stores promoting alcoholism? If we let this opportunity go, we're gonna miss some revenue that we can, we could be taking advantage of. Is Canada wrong? The whole country just went through the legalization of recreational marijuana. I'm pretty sure they went through a lot more motions that we're going through here tonight. All the states in the West, like Oregon, they are collecting a lot of revenue from the sale of recreational marijuana. I don't want my taxes to increase. I like this town. I want this town to flourish. I wanna stay here for the rest of my life, but I don't wanna be paying a lot of taxes. I'm pretty sure nobody does. I understand that we need to pay taxes to support all the services that we get, but in town, there ain't much going on as far, as far as business. I always say, if you don't have something to do in Cervel, you got nothing to look for in Cervel. There is no downtown in Cervel that we can say, oh, let's go shopping here or there. The stores that we have here are basically supported by local residents. We don't have an influx of people from all the, from all the towns coming to Cervel for, for any reason that I know of. People don't come here to shop. There's basically not much here going on. The industries that we have here, I don't see much going on in the development of new industries. I've been in Cervel since nineteen eighty-nine, and the reason why I chose this town, the quality of life, it's a nice town, quiet, nothing to do here if you don't live here. Basically, I hope things change when they open that new mall, and from what I understand, there is so many things going on with that that might not even happen. I might be wrong on that, but so as far as the kids being exposed to that, I mean, they are exposed right now to alcohol, does that mean we have a problem with the kids becoming alcoholics? I don't really see the relevance on, like they say, it might be a gateway drug. I honestly don't believe in that. So if, like the other gentleman was saying, if we don't make it happen here, whoever wants to smoke weed is gonna go somewhere else to get it. If another town does it, a short drive to another town, they're gonna go get it. So I don't see a problem, and as far as the turnaround, I was lucky that I heard about this meeting because the school sent me a message, an email, but other than that, that was, as far as I know, that was the only advertising.
Terry, where did you post this?
This meeting was posted on our website, on the Cable Access Channel, in the newspaper, and it was through the mayor and council's due diligence that we sent it on over to the schools to be sent out to the parents and students.
We try to be diligent about that.
Well, I'm talking for myself. I heard it from
Understood, understood.
A message that I got from the school.
With the death of the newspaper, it's very difficult to get public messages out, and we haven't found anything that's close to replacing the circulation of the newspapers.
And a final, a final question. If this was already voted on, what are we doing here? If you guys already decided, no, why are you running here?
This is a statement, a statement of policy. It's not a law in Cervel. It's a statement of policy that we don't wanna have the recreational sale of marijuana, not the use of it, but the sale of it. And it's a policy statement. It's not an ordinance. An ordinance is a law. This is not an ordinance, it's a policy statement trying to reflect the population of Cervel and to deliver the message to the state legislators that the people of Cervel via the governing body is opposed to the recreational use of marijuana.
May I expand on that? I know we're not supposed to
Please.
But the other reason we're having these meetings is we have to address this in one form or another in our zoning laws and the zoning ordinance. I don't think anyone up here is in favor of having it at the gas station next to the high school, whether for marijuana or against marijuana. They don't want it there, so we have to get the public's input to see, first of all, if we're gonna allow it. Second, if we are going to allow it, how are we gonna put restrictions on it to make sure that it's not near our children? Because again, I will speak for everyone, nobody wants it with the children. Okay? Their minds aren't developed, just like we passed an ordinance a few years ago here before the state did, raising the age of smoking from eighteen to twenty-one. You can't buy cigarettes in Cervel before, at twenty-one now, before, we did that before the state did that, and you can't buy alcohol before twenty-one. So we wanna make sure that we're protected and create an ordinance, a zoning ordinance. If it's going to be allowed, where? If not, make sure that we're protected so that we don't get challenged and losing court, and next thing you know, it's at that gas station next to the high school. So the input that we're getting, one, yes, is the town in favor of the marijuana, of marijuana being sold in, recreational marijuana sold in Cervel? That's why I was opposed to the resolution last night, because I did wanna hear some input, and we do have more people coming. The second part is input on that zoning ordinance, which will be a law, which will govern where, or if, and then if so, where it would be permitted to be sold.
Well, like you mentioned, we already got ordinances related to the sale of liquor, to the sale of cigarettes. We already got the experience with those. Why can't we apply those?
Mayor, may I?
Because it doesn't specifically, I mean, I know Steve could speak on this also, but right now what we have is, you're right, you're absolutely right.
Our ordinances right now, our zoning ordinance is specifically addressed those particular usages, those particular, you know, alcohol and so forth. Right now, our zoning does not address marijuana, recreational, or medical at all.
Well, that wasn't, that wasn't the case back then. This is something new that is coming up.
That's why we need to address it.
That's why Mr. Buchanan is saying what we need to decide moving forward and why we are holding these forums, because we have right now a hole within our zoning ordinances because it was never entertained, allowed, or legal before. Now we know that we're facing this potential, so we're gonna have to make some really serious decisions in the event that the governor decides to legalize this. And I really do credit the, our council and the mayor here for putting together a committee now, actually prior to this meeting and a few back, so that we can research and try and do this in a smart way, rather than just a knee-jerk reaction with limited input and limited knowledge. So we're trying to actually be very proactive, very informed, in order to do what is in the best interest of Cervel, the children, as well as the residents that come out, and I think that's a very important point to make, Annie, that we have a lot of decisions to make moving forward. Please don't get hung up on a resolution that we know is non-binding. We have a lot of other decisions, and I'm grateful that we have a little bit better turnout today, but I wish that there was even more here. I know, I think we all get stopped on the street in the grocery store. Mayor, you mentioned that you've spoken to many people already that come up to you personally. I know I get it twenty-four-seven. Parents, even students, I'm very impressed with our, our TIGS member, which is a great organization, but a lot of people will stop us on the street. They might not always come to a microphone. I think this is sometimes a difficult and taboo subject to come up to a microphone about, and I, I credit you guys for coming up and speaking.
All right. So I'd ask that the governing body also respect the need for brevity tonight. Councilman Grillo?
I will do as you wish, Mayor. I just want to explain a procedural issue. So we've all agreed we're not gonna talk about the merits or the morality behind marijuana. What we're gonna talk about tonight is the procedural aspect we have to approach. So this resolution that you see here is essentially a letter to Trenton expressing the council's belief. As you may have heard, three council members voted yes, two abstained. I wasn't present last night, but I would have voted no. So this is, while obviously this is, this was legal and it'll be sent to Trenton, et cetera, it's not necessarily the voice of the entire council. As Councilman Buchanan said, where we do have a chance to have a voice is when we're drafting the zoning ordinances that will impact how marijuana is potentially sold for adult use. You mentioned alcohol, tobacco, there are restrictions. It's potential that the same restrictions may be placed on medical marijuana, on adult use marijuana. We don't know, we haven't gotten to that point yet, but I just wanna make sure that everyone in the room understands how this process is working. This resolution will be sent to Trenton. We have a subcommittee, myself, Councilman Lembo, Councilman Buchanan. We are deliberating on a lot of sort of deep dive issues, but what the end result will be, if, and I imagine this will be the reality, is that there will be a zoning ordinance change which affects where and how you can actually sell adult use marijuana. So I just want everyone to be clear about the action that this governing body is going to actually have to take. It's not quite as simple as the resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you. Young lady?
I feel so short.
If you'd say your name, dear.
Luella Albert Leos. Albert, L-I-O-S, Leos. Ninety-one Washington Road.
Go ahead, Luella.
I'm not here to say, yes, I want it, or no, I don't want it. I have a question, though. Everybody's saying, well, if it comes into Cervel, will it be in the gas station by the high school? Who sets how these shops are formulated?
Well, I think, it's going through the legislature now. At the original meeting, the mayor of Point Pleasant Beach came here, and he said there is work being done in Trenton at the moment where it could be purchased in convenience store. Don't know whether it's, don't know whether it's real, not real, will happen, won't happen. It's a new world, new world, new day. As far as not making it a, an item for the general population to vote on in the normal November election, this, it was supposed to happen quickly from Trenton.
Right.
It got delayed. Again, it's delayed now into the summer, and we don't really have the details of it. And also, from a financial point of view, my gut instinct, having been involved with elected office for a long time, is it will eventually probably be as profitable to a town as a liquor store is, which is, we don't participate in sales tax. I would imagine initially, there'll be a little bonus so that, you know, they overcome that hurdle, that resistance, but
I have been in Nevada, where our hotel was down the street from a dispensary, and we walked past it several times that week, and finally, my husband and I, we went in. I wanted to see what it was.
Right.
I said, this is, we gotta go in there. So let me tell you, that's all they sold. That's, it was a dispensary, it said cannabis dispensary. I thought it was medical at first. You go in, you see nothing but two people working and a policeman. He looks at, they have to look at your license, and they have to register it. Then they take you to the room where everything is. It's like a grocery store with oils and edibles and joints. They, they ask you what you want, you buy what you want. You can't smoke it on the street, it has to be in the privacy of your own home, because we were in a hotel. My husband, I, Kyle, I kid you, my husband goes through the same thing. He was a Marine, and it's the same thing. So to be perfectly honest, he bought a joint. We can't even get medical marijuana here. So anyway, my daughter, another story, is a flight attendant. When Colorado first went legal, she had a flight to Colorado, so her and the gang she was working with, she said it was like walking When Colorado first went legal, she had a flight to Colorado, so her and the gang she was working with, she said it was like walking into an Apple store. The people all wore khakis and golf shirts. It wasn't in the corner store, it wasn't in the gas station. I think that's where maybe you would want to push, if it's going to be. It's just, I know, in my feelings, I don't think it's a terrible thing. I know there's people who need it, kids are getting it now, and it's got formaldehyde in it. So you have to be twenty-one, they do look at your, if it's done the right way. Not in Krausers.
I don't want to mislead everyone. That was a statement that was made. We spent no time or resources verifying it.
Okay, because it seemed like everybody was, you know, commenting.
Marijuana, everybody has a different opinion.
Right. I mean, I was in college in the sixties, so I mean, I know that world, but I don't smoke. I don't, no, no, my friends smoke, but there are people like Kyle, like my husband, who could use it right now.
Well, no, we have no issue with medical marijuana.
You can't even do that in New Jersey, yeah?
Yes, you can.
Did it pass?
There's six medical dispensaries in New Jersey. One, the closest one is Woodbridge.
Did it pass?
I may have misled you. What I meant to say is that VA does not offer me it as a solution. They offer me instead a cocktail of chemicals. But it is a medical, you can find medical providers who will give you
But the VA won't?
VA is not allowed to, it's a federal, it's the second largest federal budget line.
Last I heard, we didn't have it here yet.
There's six in New Jersey. Closest one is Woodbridge.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else? Yes. No, come on up, Kyle. Kevin, Kevin, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. I just wanted to come up again.
Kevin, we need
Sorry, Kevin Heaney, H E A N E Y. Thank you for having me up again. I just wanted to speak a bit, just for a moment, on process. And I know, you know, as you can see by the turnout tonight, I think we all wish that more people would come and discuss these issues. You know, whether you think one thing or another, that's what we all want. And I would just say that I know the wildly popular Saraville Police Department Facebook page has thousands of followers. And I know other social media forums like Twitter, Instagram are very popular. And if I can make a comment from the list of distribution methods, it comes across as though you're cherry-picking your audience. When you're putting some forum like this on public access cable in the middle of the day and in the newspaper, you're not going to get something, I don't, I don't want to, like, I'm not accusing anybody, this is just my thought.
No, there's no conspiracy here to have a low turnout.
That's not what I'm suggesting. I just want to say, as a suggestion for the future, I would really encourage other means of communication with the people of the borough.
What's your recommendation?
I would say, like I said, the Saraville Police Department page has a huge following. I mean, that's just one example. But I would say Facebook, Twitter, other means of access. I know, you know, when, when it seems like, you know, the distribution methods aren't distributed across demographics, you're going to get one particular, a predominance of one particular point of view. That would be my thought on process.
Thank you.
That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Come on up. I need you to identify yourself. It's, it's a law for the public records.
Kyle Osmoski, Haven Terrace. I mentioned briefly that I had switched careers. I changed from being a war profiteer engaged in the most expensive per-subscriber GSM cellular network providing E911 services in Afghanistan, to becoming a baker. I came home, I, I sort of thought better of my previous ten years of experience and decided that I would make a change. And part of what I think benefits a society is having an open forum for discussion. Being myself now a formerly trained baker, my intention would be to take my business that I would hope in a recreation or adult-use marijuana industry, create a business, which I would enlist the generation that agrees with me to be my employees, to be my patrons, to be the people who came in, voiced things on poetry night. These are things that won't happen in another forum. They're not going to see poetry night in a bar. But in a daytime cafe setting, you may see adult turnout on issues which spur social change that might not otherwise happen. This is a benefit I could offer as a bakery industry in the adult-use marijuana marketplace. I think that if, as several people have indicated, if you do not, but another nearby township does, that just drives the money elsewhere. That was the caution I attempted to shed light on here, was that being shortsighted here would set you back in ways that you wouldn't be able to comport with later, looking back, that you would have had money for this or this program that would have been nice to do to stave off these other, you know, negative latent consequences of whatever other, you know, flaws we have as a society. It was just that, that as a person who would be interested in starting such a business in this municipality, I would be forced to take it elsewhere, and I'd have no problem doing that, but this is where I grew up. And this is the community I'm connected to. And these are the people that I want to spend the rest of my life around. My children go to school here, and I don't intend on uprooting them, but unless I have to. And the fact is, I have a family opportunity to create a family business, and I will do that, but I just prefer to do it home.
Thank you, Kyle. Are there other questions or comments on this issue? Yes, sir.
My name is Wyatt Durham. I, Wyatt?
And your last name Wyatt?
Durham, as in the, like, the bus company. I, I just wanted to say that
And where do you live, Wyatt?
Oh, I, so I live in Morgan's Bluff. I'm not sure if I'm supposed to be
What's the street?
It's, it's eleven oh one Klimak Place. All right, because it says South Amboy on my address, so I was raised, yeah, I grew up on thirteen Vernon Street.
It's the capital of Saraville.
I, so I really just wanted, I was looking at the verbiage of the resolution, and I noticed that it delineated the council's perspective when it comes to retail sale. But have you considered alternative means of capitalizing on the burgeoning industry? Like
Capitalizing on what?
On the, on the burgeoning industry of adult-use marijuana. Like there's, there are means by which to garner, garner tax revenue through cultivation, through processing. You don't have to have people coming in from outside of the town to be purchasing marijuana here. Like obviously, there are correlations between liquor stores in the society and crime. Like if you see, like, when there are more liquor stores in a given area, it's usually a clear delineation that it's an area susceptible to crime. But if this is a train that is not yielding in any way, shape, or form, there may be a means by which for our town to gain a revenue stream from it without actually selling it to the general public. We could have a facility here where people are processing it for the dissemination elsewhere within the state. It's going to be happened soon, so don't box yourself out simply because you are afraid that, you know, you might increase the levels of crime, you might, you might make children more susceptible to the use therein if it's distributed here. What we can do is still gain the tax revenue without actually offering that platform of sales.
Wyatt, if I may, or Mayor, if I may, that all is being looked at with the subcommittee. Because it's one encompassing ordinance that we're going to create. So we've been bouncing off, the three of us have been bouncing off each other, all the, all the ideas. And there's things that I may not think of, that Steve or Pat think of, and then we bounce it off each other. So all that, we're trying to make sure that it's a comprehensive ordinance. We haven't tackled the recreational aspect of it, we're still talking about the medical, but it's all-encompassing.
All right, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to speak, sir? Yeah.
Uh, no.
Are there any other questions or comments on this issue? Being no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Will the public portion be closed?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anything for executive session?
No, sir.
Being nothing for executive session, I'll call for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor? Thank you, everyone, for coming out.
Good night, Mike. Good night, everyone.